Oh, that was loud.
Authority.
Sorry about that. We'll go ahead and call the meeting's order. Welcome and thank you everyone for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and start. Is there anyone from the Faith Alliance here for the prayer? If not, we'll have Councilmember Edwards if you would be so kind to say the invocation. And then if you're willing and able, if you can stand.
Yes.
Oh, you're with the Faith Alliance?
Yes.
Sure, okay, perfect. We're so sorry, we weren't sure. If you can give us your name and tell us which church you're from, we would appreciate that. Whoever would like to stand if they're willing and able.
I'm Bob Skyery. My parish is the St. Anthony of Padua.
Thank you.
In the sixth chapter of St. Matthew's Gospel, verse 10, contains perhaps the most profound four words in holy scripture. A prayer, commonly known as the Lord's Prayer, states, "Thy will be done." When we say these words, we pray that God will handle every situation in the way He deems best. Let us therefore during this meeting strive to defer to Him and let Him know that we desire His will be done as decisions are made to better the lives of all Casa Grande residents, especially those deprived of the basic necessities of life. May the good Lord's grace and guidance descend upon us so as we may better understand and do His holy will during this meeting and all forthcoming meetings. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and thank you, Matt. Okay, Adrian, if you can please accept for the record that all the council is here?
So noted.
Okay. And first on the agenda is the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to consider approval of the minutes for the city council meeting dated April 7th, 2025, and accept for the record the minutes of the planning and zoning special meeting on March 6th, 2025, the regular planning and zoning commission meeting of March 6th, 2025, and accept for the record the minutes of the board of adjustment for March 11th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion on any of these? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The claims against the city.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims for April the 2nd through April the 15th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the claims? Not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes on the agenda from anyone?
Madam Mayor, we have no changes this evening.
Okay, if we can get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a special presentation. We're not going to let you leave, Paul. I'll go ahead and step down here. You didn't want to do this, Paul, but you're back there. Anyways, as you all know, Paul Tice retired last week, I guess it was, right? So he's back this evening, but tonight we're recognizing and honoring Paul Tice, who retired last week at the city's planning, as the city's planning director, planning and development director after 15 years of service. Way back on March 22nd, 2010, Paul relocated from Colorado and began his duties here in Casa Grande. When I think back over my 14 years on the city council and reflect on the growth and development issues that became before us, Paul was certainly center stage with those, helping us as elected officials to chart the best course for our future. It hasn't always been easy, but you have uplifted the highest standards of professionalism in doing your job every day. It is something said that working in local government, and especially in the city government, affords an individual a unique and special opportunity to make a positive impact and a positive difference in a community. I and we as a council believe that Paul's legacy as our planning and development director for the past 15 years is true to that idea. Paul, you have made a positive difference. So what's more to be said? You will be missed and on behalf of my fellow councilmembers, the city staff members in your department and beyond, and the citizens who you have served over the past 15 years, congratulations on your retirement. All the best to you and the next chapter of your life. Congratulations.
Sure.
I won't take three minutes. I guarantee it. Well, first I want to say thank you, Mayor Fitzgibbons, and members of council for this recognition. It means a lot to me. When I first took the job as planning and development director, I thought I'd stay for five years, but here it is 15 years later. I discovered that for me, the secret to job satisfaction was to have strong value alignment between myself and the organization for which I worked. I found that here in Casa Grande. Due to the great people I've had the pleasure to work with, I actually look forward to coming to work each day. I had a running joke with Larry that having two bad days in a row would motivate me to retire. That never happened. But now it's the time in my life to turn the page and pursue new adventures and experiences. I will be traveling for the next six months, but plan on returning in the fall and being a seasonal resident. After that, it's one day at a time. One thing I'm going to miss is knowing what new developments are about to occur in Casa Grande, what is next to be constructed. I guess I'll have to rely on Facebook and everyone else for that information. I want to thank my talented planning department staff for all their hard work. I couldn't have accomplished anything without them. It's hard turning over a department that you have led, coached, and mentored for 15 years, but I'm grateful that we were able to hire Dan Coxworth as the new planning and development director. The department and the city is in good hands with Dan. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to do what I could to improve the image and character of Casa Grande and improve the quality of life for our residents. I will end with a saying I often close out meetings with, "That's a wrap." Thank you.
We have a couple of board openings, if you're interested. Okay, we'll talk to you in six months. Thank you. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? From the council, staff, anyone, anything, or anyone from the public? Okay.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, next item is public comments. This is the time if anyone would like to address the council. I do have two speaker cards, and I don't know if these are for the public hearing. They are? Oh, they already spoke? Both of these guys are? Eric and Sal? Okay, so that was from the study session. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this point? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is I-1.
This evening, I'm asking Kim Owensby, our wastewater superintendent, to present this item, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff recommends that Mayor and City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Wilson &amp; Company in the amount of $1,857,020 plus an additional contingency of $250,000 for a total amount not to exceed $2,107,020. This contract will provide for design and construction management services for the water reclamation facility, Phase 4B, Stage 1 upgrades. The Phase 4B improvements are intended to upgrade the facility supporting the Phase 4A capacity expansion to provide long-term reliability, operability, and safety. It will also reduce long-term operational costs, including power, maintenance, and chemical usage. A few of the Phase 4B improvements will include a new administration building and expanding our laboratory capabilities at the WRF, also converting an equalization basin into an emergency storage only, reducing chemical uses by switching to ultraviolet disinfection, enhancing odor controls at the plant, as well as removing existing piping, tanks, equipment that were abandoned from previous upgrades. We'll also develop some accurate survey records, drawings for us for the entire plant for us to be able to use in the future and as we're providing maintenance. So the Phase 4, Stage 1 includes a background investigation, preliminary design and services, C-MAR selection, and some long lead time equipment purchases assistance. With that, I want to say that there will be a Phase 4B, Stage 2 that will be coming. This is just what we're handling with this current budget. Obviously, once evaluation is done, we will be moving on and needing to complete that Stage 2, which will include a final design and permitting and construction, as well as construction administration. So again, Stage 2 is not part of what we're looking at now. That will be coming separately to council at a later time. So and obviously, we will not begin any of that work without obviously a written approval. So public works selected an appropriate qualified consultant, Wilson &amp; Company, for this project through the nonprofit National Governmental Purchases Cooperative. So I'm going to pause right there because I have a feeling you might have some questions, so I'll try and yield those for you, so.
Okay, any questions? Comments?
Why, just stop, Stephen. How'd you know? So, two questions. This does plan to go out as a CM at Risk contract for the construction component? Is that correct?
Construction management. So we would then go through the process of bringing a contractor onboard for that portion of it.
But is it going to be procured as a CM at Risk, or is it going to be a hard bid?
That would be our preference, CM.
CM at Risk?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess how far along are we going to let the design progress before selecting that CM at Risk contractor?
We've not really had that conversation with our consultant yet. I don't know, Brian, excuse me.
James.
James is here tonight.
He is.
Do you have any response to that?
But as far as 30%, 50% design, much, much sooner than 30%? Okay, that's, I just wanted to confirm that. Okay, I'm good with that then.
Any more questions? I just have a question if you can, oh, I'm sorry, if you can clarify like the big picture. So we're in Phase, we're in Phase 4.
4A right now.
Right, and so, I mean, this is like, this has been, all these different phases have been going on for how long now? Can you give a quick summary?
Couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, just quick, not just not detailed for the new council members and just give us an idea of the big picture and where.
So with 4A, it's taking our daily treatment capacity from 12 mg/d up to 18 mg/d. We've done work in the influent pump station. There was also a structure that was built upstream that tied in the lift stations that are on both the east and the west sides. There's been upgrade on the effluent pump station as well. We've done some odor controls and solids, and then we will also have the media that, the fixed film media that we're implementing into the aeration basins in order to basically enhance our treatment capacity rather than building actual structures. So with that, we've had to put in some screens in order to be able to collect that media so that we don't waste it out and be able to return it back into the plant after it gets through a certain process.
And as you may recall, when Wilson did their presentation in the study session, they talked about Phase A was things we needed to get done to get that capacity in place so that we can continue to want growth in our community and accept that growth in our community. But it was a fast track project to make sure we hit all of our deadlines, and that was Phase A. So Phase B is everything else we probably should have done at that time, but we just didn't have the time to wait for that full design. So this will take our design to our full design and finish building the additional, and when I say capacity, additional hydraulic capacity of our plant. And I think there was some confusion along the way that we would be increasing our permitted capacity. We are not. 18 mg/d is our permitted capacity. The hydraulic capacity improvements are going to give us the ability to accept up to 36 million gallons a day at one time and still be able to have the plant stay online without any issues. So it builds that ability for us to manage those peaks and ebbs and flows that happen with the different flows. Like if everybody flushed the toilet at the same time, we have to take it, so that's what that builds that.
Right.
We did not do that with.
Phase A.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I compare it to rush hour traffic. The streets can handle typical flows, but every once in a while you get that rush of traffic. We get rushes of wastewater.
Right, okay. So timeout when you flush the toilet. Yes, question?
And then, just to thank you guys, it's a big piece of infrastructure we have to spend a lot of money on, but you don't get to see it. It's not glamorous by any means, but it's very important when you do flush the toilet, that it works, right? So, and bear with us with all the improvements. You know, another thing that we don't talk about a lot is our economic development piece because without a certain sewer line along Burris Road that council before us put in, we wouldn't have a lot of the industry we have, and now we have to be able to take those flows from the industry. So it's a big economic development, very important to have a good sewer system, excuse me, wastewater treatment system, right? Sorry. Because it does help with economic development. It's very important. You don't realize how many groups we talk to and that's one of their first questions is can you handle our outflows? So keep it flowing. Thanks.
I was just, I was just going to say too, as well, with all the work that we do on the courts and road, everybody be patient. That's all part of it, but we have to have that main station ready to handle that. It has to have the upgrades, and so, and I'm glad you're talking about it again, another phase, and we'll be back with another phase, another stage, and so, and able to handle whether it's the industrial side, whether it's the east side, because a lot of things is going out that way as well. And so I know we have to have this in place, and so, and I think that's what Matt was alluding to as well. So I appreciate you all and the work that you do.
Thank you.
I think I heard ultraviolet light?
Yes, you did.
Is that something we've used all along, or is that new?
No, that will be new. We use sodium hypochlorite to disinfect right now. We buy it in bulk and put it in our chlorine contact basin in order to achieve our disinfection.
And what does it do?
It basically disinfects the water so that it can be released out, but then when we do disinfect it, we also have to neutralize it with the sodium bisulfite. So doing it with ultraviolet in order to disinfect, we would actually, wouldn't have to worry about both of those chemicals.
Okay. My curiosity was based on the builder of my pool put one of those on it and made a big deal out of it. I thought it was a gimmick, you know? I thought, who is magic? But anyway, I appreciate that.
Ultraviolet.
Yes, go ahead.
Not a question, but for those of you who have not gone out, Kim and her staff do a wonderful job on tours. So if you don't know what 4B is, I recommend doing a tour with Kim. Go see what it is.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5764, resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Wilson &amp; Company, Inc. to provide design and construction management engineering services for the water reclamation facility Phase 4B upgrade, Stage 1 project, authorizing the expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Wilson &amp; Company, Inc.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5764 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, item L-1. Looks like you're up, James.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. So this item in front of you this evening is for a zone change to accommodate copper sky assisted living. It's a site about two and a half acres in size located at the west end of East Crystal. The applicant is seeking approval of this zone change in order to develop this site for an assisted living facility for senior residents with memory challenges. There was a major site plan that has already been presented in front of Planning Commission that was approved contingent upon the approval of the zone change, but it is intended to accommodate two 9,000 square foot buildings with a total of 32 memory care units. The buildings will be single story at 23 feet in height with 36 parking spaces. I did mention two and a half acres, it's actually a little smaller, two acres in size. Now, this project has already been developed. This is actually the second phase. The first phase lies to the south, and that first phase gets its access from Valerie Street. This development, Phase 2, is going to get its access from Crystal Street. Both are accessed via Arizona to the east. Now you are being asked to consider the zone change application this evening, but just a little bit of a background for you. Planning Commission at its March 6th meeting had already considered the conditional use permit in order to allow this type of facility in the R2 zone. In the current zoning urban ranch, it does not allow this type of use, so it did need a zone change to R2, but then in addition to that, a conditional use permit specific for this type of group home use. And then a major site plan to approve for the layout of the buildings, the landscaping, and the parking areas, et cetera. And there was also a preliminary plat approved. All of these were contingent on council's consideration of the zone change. Now at an upcoming city council meeting, you'll be asked to consider a final plat for the project. And this here shows you the surrounding zoning. The bulk of the area primarily to the east where the site gets its access is zoned single family residential. However, this site is zoned urban ranch. The request would put it into the R2 zoning, identical to the R2 zoning that accommodates the Phase 1 portion of the memory care development. We are asking or recommending conditions of record, that's what the CR is, and what the recommended conditions of record are, are similar to what was placed on the property to the south. And what that is, is that even though we are asking for R2 zoning, the principally permitted uses for this property shall be limited to single family homes meeting R2 zoning standards, and the conditional uses allowed on this property shall be limited to assisted living or nursing homes meeting R2 zoning standards. So we do have the benefit of a major site plan already have been presented because this site is not intending to develop for single family home development, but we did want to indicate that just in case this plan never did go to fruition, there'd be some conditions of record on it prohibiting other more intense types of R2 development, such as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, et cetera. In the R2 zone, there are specific setbacks that would need to be followed, and due to the benefit of having the major site plan already reviewed, we know that this proposed project well meets these setbacks. I do want to point out that the closest distance between the building and the nearest single family residential property lines, 115 feet. When reviewing zone changes, there are three criteria that are evaluated to ensure conformance with zoning and rezoning principles, and they all center around conformance with the general plan. The first one is the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and applicable elements. So I do want to call attention to Guiding Principle Number 5, which is one of the land use elements, which is to support development on vacant infill lots that can be efficiently and effectively. and effectively served by municipal services. This is a great opportunity to develop a hard-to-develop property, because as you can see, it's at the very end of a residential subdivision. It has some access challenges. It doesn't have direct access to Florence Boulevard. And so, an assisted living facility is regarded as a low-traffic generator, and so, it won't impact the single-family neighborhood to a very great degree. It has less of a traffic impact as if it were to develop for single-family residences. And the type of architecture that is planned does have elements that look like a single-family home, a large single-family home, but it's limited to, here it's single-story, it has some craftsman architecture, and it does help blend in to that residential environment. The second criteria is a rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes densities and intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. So we look at how this is designated, and it sits within the community corridor land use designation, which does allow for high-density development up to 25 dwelling units per acre. However, this will not be the case. It fits well within that threshold. All developments adjacent to or across a local street from single-family residential, such as this case, shall be designed to be compatible with the adjacent single-family uses and to provide suitable transition to the more urban community corridor uses. So again, this is compliant because it is a relatively low-traffic generator, since this site is reliant upon access via a local street such as Crystal. The third criteria is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. So this facility provides a valuable service to citizens with memory impairment and accomplishes this in a tucked-away setting that will provide reprieve for its inhabitants while not greatly impacting the single-family area budding the site. We do regard this as an effective use of access-challenged land that wouldn't be appropriate for more intense uses. And I just wanted to call attention to the fact that this site will have some internal circulation. It's not really a matter of zoning, but just out of curiosity in terms of, well, how do uses on this site fit? And so, there will be access from Crystal Street while the existing development gets its access from Valerie. However, there will be a cut-through between the lot to the north and the lot to the south by an access drive behind the building, so that there will be some internal circulation. That's helpful because in case someone, you know, meant to turn on Crystal but didn't and turned on Valerie, they don't have to necessarily back up and go through the neighborhood to get back to the correct road. They can just cut through that shared access drive. And I do want to point out that the property to the west is a very thin strip of urban ranch zone property that sits between this site and Fiesta Grande, and it still is zoned urban ranch. But with the development of the first phase, there was an access easement granted, as indicated by that purple arrow to the left there at the bottom. So there is access to that parcel through an already-recorded easement. And, you know, although there are no plans for development of that urban ranch zoned lot, it does have access to get to it, and if it does happen to need a second point of access, there is opportunity to either work with Fiesta Grande further to the west, or to the property to the north, or another access easement in the future with this subject property. But one was sufficient at this time for a very low-density zone district. Regarding public notification, we met and exceeded that which is required by code. We did send out notification of these applications being considered for review, not only to property owners within 300 feet, but we also included every owner of property along Crystal Street, because they were going to be the most affected. And then, we did follow the other protocol. We did receive one inquiry by a resident with concern about misdirected traffic. Their observation was that vehicles traveling to the existing facility sometimes would end up on the wrong street, and they could see the facility, but they would just end up parking and walking to the facility, because they, I guess they kind of gave up. And so, what we imposed as part of the conditional use permit is that we would consider appropriate roadway signage indicating which roads were dead ends and which roads were through streets in order to maybe help thwart that issue. But that might, that problem might work itself out now, because there will be an additional street that has access to this development. So it'll limit the opportunities for vehicles to get turned around in there. At its March 6 public hearing, Planning Commission did unanimously move to forward to city council a recommendation to approve this zone change from urban ranch to R2, subject to the following conditions of record, which I'd already reviewed, but essentially, the principally permitted uses for this property shall be limited to single-family homes meeting R2 zoning standards, and conditional uses allowed on this property shall be limited to assisted living or nursing homes meeting the R2 zoning standards. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nice facility. The one upstairs is really nice, and this looks like it's gonna be just like that one. And then, I like also how you can access the new facility from the old facility, as Jane stated, you know, have to go down Crystal, around the corner, back around, and so.
Any other questions?
Covered all mine.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here that would like to come up and speak on this item, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and if we can go ahead and get an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.464, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch UR to multifamily residential R2 on the property generally located west of the terminus of East Crystal Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbon, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.464 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedalen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item L2.
So this item is also a zone change for quick trip. The zone change request involves five acres of property that is currently zoned urban ranch, and the requested zone district is PAD, or otherwise known as Planned Area Development, to accommodate a quick-trip convenience store and auto-fueling. The site is located at the southeast corner of McCartney and Tucker. So, the property is currently zoned urban ranch, as you can see on the zoning map here. Urban ranch is a very low-density residential zone district. It primarily accommodates agricultural uses and single-family development on properties no smaller than an acre and a quarter. In some situations, urban ranch is the intended zone district. However, in these instances, as you can see, it's surrounded by more intense zone districts. We consider urban ranch more of a, what we call a holding zone, because when the property was annexed into the city, it probably took on the most similar zoning that it was when it was in the county, which was general rural, with the idea that eventually, as the area develops, requests would come in for a more intense zone, whether that be for commercial or a higher-density residential development. And this site should not be totally unfamiliar to you. A little bit of background on this site. Back in October of '24, city council had denied a zone change from urban ranch to Planned Area Development. At that time, the request was to allow for a convenience store with no more than three diesel pumps to accommodate truck fueling. And it was denied, and there were concerns that the truck element would change the character of the area, and it would exacerbate traffic on McCartney. As you can see on the associated plan with that zone change, they were providing fueling for trucks to the south of the store, highlighted in yellow, and then further to the south, highlighted in yellow, they were showing that there would be truck parking. And there was a lot of concern that that just really wasn't compatible with the residential neighborhood of that area. Now, the Planned Area Development zoning request has been modified. As you can see, they're planning to only utilize the north half of the site to accommodate a convenience store and fuel station. The south half of the site is designated in the Planned Area Development Zone for future commercial development that is to be subject to B2 uses, which is our general business uses. But specifically within the PAD guide, it does allow for a convenience store with auto-fueling as a by-right use, but it does specifically prohibit fueling in any accommodation for diesel trucks. It indicates that convenience stores and fuel stations are specifically prohibited from providing showers, truck repair services, laundry services, truck washing, and customer parking longer than an hour. And that helps allay concerns that this is just Phase 1 to propose the truck accommodations in the future. That doesn't happen to be the situation, because this customized PAD zoning specifically prohibits those accommodations. Otherwise, B2 general business uses are permitted, and uses such as drive-through restaurants, car washes, self-storage would be subject to the consideration of a conditional use permit, just to give you kind of an idea of the types of uses permitted in B2. Otherwise, B2 is a general business, accommodates retail uses, offices, restaurants, and the like. The other thing that this PAD does is it limits signage, or freestanding signage rather, to be monument-style only, not taller than 15 feet. And that because that had been another concern about having a fuel station use at this location if there'd be really tall signs drawing attention from the interstate. There is a site plan that is currently under review, and it is scheduled for Planning Commission consideration at their May meeting. And what the site plan proposes is a 5,300-square-foot convenience store at a height of 20 feet, and a 7,200-square-foot fuel canopy for auto-fueling at a height of 22 feet. We have a really good opportunity here to have the major site plan under review at the same time as the zoning, so that all of the reviewers and the public have an idea of what the intended purpose of the zoning is. Sometimes we get speculative zoning requests where someone has property, they know that they want to entitle it for commercial uses, but they don't have a specific user, so they really can't say what it is that they're specifically wanting, and it's hard to impose design requirements, et cetera, because they don't want to make the specification so particular that it makes it hard to attract a user. But in this case, the site does have a user for the north half of the property, and we have that major site plan in for review. The elevations show masonry architecture on all four elevations, and then they also provided some details for the auto-fuel canopy at a maximum height of 22 feet. When reviewing zone changes, and particularly involving zone districts that are to be PADs or Planned Area Developments, these are the criteria that get evaluated, and I just want to focus on the three highlighted criteria. The first is that the proposed use shall be in conformance with the general plan. So even though this area is currently zoned urban ranch, it does lie within the commerce and business land use designation. Basically, from Tucker Road to I-10 is this commerce and business land use, and from Tucker Road West, that yellow area is the neighborhood's land use. Within the commerce and business category, it is designed to promote uses that can best benefit from Casa Grande's strategic location at the intersection of two major interstates with high visibility to traffic between Phoenix, Tucson, and California. And it goes on to say that properties designated as commerce and business are located along interstates, parkways, and specific areas along major arterial roadways, such as how McCartney is designated, where auto-oriented uses are dominant. It goes on to say that the commerce and business category represents a strategic effort to place auto-oriented uses in appropriate environments, ensuring that the location of office, commercial, and light industrial and retail uses complements communities' urban design goals. Although the commerce and business land category does indicate that it accommodates auto-oriented uses, we are sensitive to the fact that it is right on the border of that neighborhood's land use designation. And so, that is where there is really good opportunity to implement certain provisions to ensure that there is compatibility. And I'll talk about that a little bit on the upcoming slides, but within the commerce and business category, you'll see that commercial is listed as an appropriate land use, whereas within the neighborhoods category, it has a more limited amount of appropriate land uses. The neighborhoods category, again, is the area that's in yellow. You can still actually review and consider fuel stations and convenience stores in neighborhoods. That's why there's the presence of the Circle K Catty Corner. But commercial sites are intended to be smaller, and in general, commercial is supposed to be more neighborhood in scale. The third criteria regarding compatibility with the general plan is that the action is consistent with the general plan's goals, policies, and applicable elements. So I want to turn to goal CB-4, create visibility without compromising attractive streetscapes or community character. And so, as I mentioned, this is an auto-oriented type of use, but the way that the site plan under review helps make the auto-dominant use a little bit more compatible is by doing some subtle things such as putting the fuel canopy to the side of the store. It sits to the west instead of the typical design where you see the fuel canopy in between the convenience store and the street. So it makes the architecture of the building, albeit it's a convenience store, the focus, not a fuel canopy. The other thing that I want to point out is that within our general plan, we do have a trail map, and identified within the trail map is the McCartney Trail that is shown to run in the future from Palomino Parkway to the west, to Overfield Road, which is currently in the county, to the east. This site does accommodate that by providing a parallel DG path next to the public sidewalk that will do a couple of things. It helps make the built area a little bit further back from McCartney and creates more of a pedestrian and landscaped way between the public street and this auto-oriented use. The other criteria that I want to talk about is the relationship of the plan elements to conditions both on and off the property. I had shared this map earlier. I had shared this map earlier, but this shows you the surrounding developments and zone designations. And there's not a lot of concern technically with, with the adjacency to anywhere except for to when you go to the north and east where you have the McCartney Center, single-family residential planned area development area. However, the uses planned between that residential area and McCartney, on the north side of McCartney, are also designed and programmed for commercial uses. So staff does feel that this commercial use, given that it is catty corner and Tucker is a divider, does help with that compatibility. This arrow that is drawn in shows you the, kind of just graphically, the, the gap between where the start of the bridge over I-10 is to Tucker Road, which is approximately a quarter of a mile, maybe a little shy. Per ADOT rules, Tucker shall be the first street that is allowed full access. And, and that's probably why Tucker is that dividing line between commerce and business land use and neighborhood land use. Because Tucker is designed to be the first street where there can be full movement, right ins, right outs, left in, left outs. And so having this type of use at this type of intersection is appropriate. But this segues into the last of the criteria and it's probably the most lengthy, save the best for last, the traffic and vehicular ingress and egress. Because the, the issue with the site does tend to garner a lot of comments and concerns about traffic. And so I'll, I'll walk you through some of that and I hope I don't get too buried in details. With the development of the site, there will be dedication of public right of way. We will get some additional right of way for McCartney. McCartney is designed to be a principal arterial road. So when it's at its full buildout, it'll be 140 feet wide. It's designed in the future to be three lanes in each direction with a center median. Right now, that is not how McCartney looks, but we also don't have the right of way dedication. And the city is working on an improvement project that will improve McCartney from I-10 to Pinell, which will include two through lanes in each direction. With the development of this site will come some developer prompted improvements. And so with that comes the dedication, it's 70-foot half-street dedication for McCartney. There, they will also be dedicating right of way for the extension of Tucker. And then they're also going to be dedicating right of way for an east-west road on the south. Both the extension of Tucker and this east-west road is beneficial because it helps properties to the east and to the south gain access to Tucker, which is a very important access point because as I mentioned, that's the first road where full access is allowed west of I-10. And I drew all those arrows in to show you that what a full access intersection looks like. You have straight movement, you have right ins, right outs, left in, left outs. Because of that and because of what we know from the review of the previous proposal from QuickTrip is that this intersection will be benefited from a traffic signal. And so as part of the PAD, they have stated, they being the applicant, stated within the PAD guide that the developer shall construct a traffic signal at the Tucker and McCartney intersection. And the signal is to be constructed, accepted by the city and operational prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first development within this PAD zone. Now, there is an opportunity for this developer to seek reimbursement of impact fees through the issuance of traffic impact credits. So the way that would work is they would demonstrate that although they, they probably are responsible for the need for that traffic signal to a degree, they quantify what portion of that traffic signal is not their responsibility. What portion of that traffic is already existing that would be benefited from a traffic signal if they weren't constructing? And then we would be able to give them an offset to their impact fees and even potentially a development agreement to make them whole. So they're paying their, their fair share of the responsibility for the cost of that signal. Moving on though, more about traffic, I'm, I'm about halfway through. Is, they are showing a access easement highlighted in yellow along the east side of the site. It's 30 feet wide. It's shared with the property owner to the east. This is helpful because that property owner, that property to the east is very access challenged because it will not have the benefit of full access onto McCartney because of ADOT's requirements of proximity to an interchange. It will be reliant upon the right of way being to be dedicated along the south of the site going east-west as well as Tucker going north-south. And that 30-foot access easement gives them a little bit more direct access. And it is designed to be a three-quarter intersection. What that means is you can go right in and right out and you can actually go left in, you just can't go left out. And these are the improvements associated with the QuickTrip development. Just to kind of better visualize what we're talking about, there will be some right turn lanes constructed to access Tucker Road going eastbound on McCartney. There'll be right turn, there'll be a right turn lane on eastbound McCartney to get to that access drive that's on the east side of the site. There'll be a left turn lane going westbound on McCartney to go south onto Tucker as well as to go south onto that access drive. And there will be that traffic signal. And as I mentioned, the city is in design right now for a McCartney improvement project where there will be improvements from I-10 to Pinell. A close up here shows you what that profile looks like. It does have to taper to one lane as you get closer to the bridge because the bridge is only one lane. But it does taper then the other way into four lanes as you approach Tucker. And then just out of interest, as you go further west at Palomino and McCartney, there is a traffic signal soon to be constructed by the Flats multifamily development. They also were required to construct a signal prior to certificates of occupancy for their development. And they will also be making some adjacent improvements in that area. So a quick summary with regard to traffic is the traffic impact analysis had been previously accepted by the Arizona Department of Transportation and the then city traffic engineer. The new TIA to show the fuel station without the truck accommodations and a slightly smaller footprint is under review by our city traffic engineer consultant. But we do know that per the PAD, they are to construct a traffic signal. And there will be dedication made for a number of rights of way. And there will be roadway improvements for McCartney as well as Tucker. I do want to mention conformance with House Bill 2574. It's regarding an analysis of housing. And I just wanted to point out that this is going from urban ranch to a commercial zone that, that takes away the ability to accommodate housing. However, this was at the applicant's desire. And the general plan commerce and business does accommodate housing if, if the correct zoning was proposed. In this instance, they're not proposing any kind of residential component. Regarding the public notification process, we met with all that's required by the code. We did hold a neighborhood meeting earlier in the year. It was lightly attended. And you know, I, I think the takeaway from it is that most people were happy that the truck element was removed. But they still had a lot of concerns about the traffic. They're not happy, they being the attendees and primarily residents from the McCartney Center neighborhood, are not happy about how narrow McCartney is and, and the need for an improved interchange. However, although it is, I think everyone agrees that that interchange is in need of improvements. Based on the traffic analysis, the addition of the QuickTrip isn't so intense that it moves the needle to where the, the interchange becomes inoperable. It still functions, it doesn't move the needle to where no development can be recommended for approval. Because the city does have a position that if the TIA is not acceptable, we cannot recommend approval of, of the development. More will be discussed on that when this item does go to planning commission for the major site plan component. This is the zoning element, of course. The major site plan focuses more on traffic because that's the actual implementation of the zoning and the, and the very specifics of what's being proposed. And that traffic analysis is under review by the traffic consultant. With that, I do want to say that at the April 3 public hearing of the planning commission, they did vote unanimously 7-0 to forward a recommendation to city council to approve this zone change from urban ranch to QuickTrip PAD, subject to the following condition of record. The condition of record has to do with dedication of right of way. Ordinarily, we seek dedication of right of way at the time of development being proposed because they're going to be able to demonstrate they're putting traffic on the right of way and that's our opportunity to get that right of way for that traffic to be put on. This condition acknowledges that we will, we do have the ability to ask for right of way prior to, if needed, for a city project. So that's helpful for our McCartney plans or for future Tucker plans in case that, those rights of way are needed ahead of the time that they're actually planning to go forward with development. There were technical modifications that planning commission did subject their approval to. However, since their approval of this zone recommendation of the zone change, those technical modifications have been addressed. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
I, I want to say I'm very glad that QT is back and I'm glad that it is minus the truck fuel issue. The only question I have, James, is Tucker, as it, as it progresses south, it obviously has to make a jog or a turn east because the alignment is, is way off. Is that going to cut into their property or is that planned out yet or?
Councilmember Huddleston, we don't exactly know what the ultimate alignment of a collector road through the undeveloped area will, will take. I, I went to this slide to kind of articulate it a little bit better. On the east end of the Maribella neighborhood down towards the bottom, they are planning to come in with a final plat for that single-family neighborhood of 250 residents where they are dedicating Tucker on their eastern development, eastern side of their plat. But if you notice, that's quite a bit offset from where Tucker and McCartney meet. So how the Tucker at the Maribella point and the Tucker at the McCartney point end up uniting is still not quite clear because it's going to be dependent upon someone going into that area, someone being a developer or the owner to master plan how they intend the, that circulation to work. So short of that or shy of that, we, we unfortunately have to do it kind of in a piece, piecemeal manner, not knowing what uses are to come out of that area to remain urban ranch zoned. So what we've done in the interim is we are asking that at the south end of the QuickTrip property, they will be dedicating east-west right of way that will take access over to the property to the east, which is that McCartney Commons neighborhood to the east there. So it, it will, there'll be an east-west road right of way along the south end of that subject site to bring access to McCartney Commons. Now, in the future, it's possible that Tucker proper will continue south where it currently is along the western end of the QuickTrip site. It may continue south. That east-west right of way may be there just as another street. We're, we're not certain, but for now, that's the best way to ensure that there will at least be right of way to get development from the east over to Tucker and McCartney.
Okay, but the ultimate plan is that Tucker will line up with the development to the south?
Yeah.
Okay.
James, you had a slide, another slide that had the arrows where Tucker, it was going straight. They were blue. There's another slide you had and I believe that that'll probably help out with that question too. Because it looked like that Tucker Road is going to come straight, straight across.
Yeah.
You'll make that, so if I'm, if I'm heading east on McCartney, I'll make that right turn in line with Tucker Road that's right inside the circle K.
Oh, I think I know which one.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because on there had the arrows going straight, straight across.
I'm almost there.
There you go, right there.
I have a better one.
So that, so.
There we go.
So I think with, with Bob's question, it, from that point of view, it looks like it's straight across? Is that where you at, Bob?
But you're wondering here.
He's wondering about south.
On the south side of it, down at the bottom of it. But up top is straight coming down Tucker. That'd be the, the entrance coming in. I would say also, I agree with Councilman Huddleston as well. I'm thankful that QT coming back, okay? I know our citizens have spoken and you all listened. You went back and just moved some things around. We do, or we're right now, we're in the stages of developing McCartney Road. So that was key with the understanding, I think ADOT's in charge of the, the bridge. So that's probably going to look like Pinell when you go down Pinell, you go to the freeway. It's one, one lane across over and, right? So it's still going to look like that for a while because I know ADOT's concerned about I-10 right now. And so, but just wanted to let QT know, thank you so much for coming back with this, removing the diesel piece of it. And so I, I like the setup here. It reminds me a little bit of the QT that's off of university. If you're going to the airport, make that right because the pump's on the side. I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I don't want to beat the dead horse, but thanks for coming back. But it just goes to show the QT team and, and Mr. Great House and his team at Birch Cracchiolo, I mean, listened to us and listened to, more importantly, the residents. And just so the people at the state legislature, we can actually work stuff out on our own at a local level. This is how it's supposed to go. You know, you heard the concerns, you guys came back, didn't give up, and we didn't give up on you either. So we're happy to have you here. And to a T, most of the people that, that were against it the first time around said, I want a regular QT here, meaning what you're putting. So hey, here's your regular QT. Thank you guys very much for coming back.
I just got a quick question or comment. If, if all this is approved, we're going to have two traffic lights in a fairly close distance to one another. We got a lot of through traffic that's not necessarily stopping at the apartments or at the QT. Are those lights going to be able to be timed so that that way through traffic is not having to stop at two lights as they're traveling westbound or eastbound?
Councilmember Dugan, as a traveler of McCartney Road myself, I, I would like to say yes, I hope so. I don't know if Kevin Lewis is here, he might be able to speak to the.
He is and he's not.
He is, and he's not.
Time's up.
Great.
Elbows back.
Any other questions?
What is the McCartney Improvement Project timeline?
They're looking at Kevin.
Because I've had people express concerns about traffic, and if you're on that road, it's not always the best to drive down. And now, if we have something else that are going to attract, it's going to attract people off of the highway, we'll have even more traffic. So that was just a concern that was brought to me.
The first phase of McCartney is going to be from Pinell to Trekkle, and we're trying to finish up the design on that so that we can bring the GMP back to council for approval. We have the CIMAR in place. The other two segments, the one in front of the high school and then this segment from peer to I-10, they're future phases, but we're trying to look at our funding, look at when we can get the, put the bonds on the street to sell those, and then program that out. But in the next two to four years, that's when we're going to be finishing that project.
Big range, huh? Two to four years.
Yes, yes. And then, we're looking at completing the QT in what timeline in comparison to that?
Sure.
Hello, council. My name is Daniel Chambers. I work for QuickTrip. I'm as the project manager for this site. Currently, it's going to, we're looking at probably a little over a year or so, just with the timing of where we're at and everything, because once, if you were fortunate enough for you guys to approve this project to move forward, then we have our second reading, then we have to go through our construction document, then all of our bidding process and stuff. And so there is a significant amount of time for that. So we're still probably a year and a half to two years away from being able to open the store.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, and I'm just going to comment like my fellow councilmembers, you know, thank you for coming back. You know, we were here during all of that, and we know you listened to the people, people were, you know, all of us, you know, how much we enjoy going into your stores, so we're just happy that you're back, and you see that this is a good investment, and we're confident it'll be a pretty, pretty high-performing store for you. I mean, there's so much traffic there, and people like your store and what you provide there, so we're, you know, I'm happy to have you back here, so thank you. Okay, any other questions? Oh, so I guess it is a public hearing. We haven't gone to that yet. So is there anyone here that would like to come up and speak on this? It's a public hearing. No? Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and if we can get an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.465, in ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch UR to planned area development, PAD, on property generally located at the southeast corner of McCartney Road and Tucker Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would like to move to approve ordinance number 1178.465 as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, then if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brummo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And thank you again for coming, and thank you to the staff, too, James and everyone, the staff are working together. We really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so.
Good reports.
Yes, reports. Why don't you start, Matt?
Okay. I have a few things to say. First, first of all, I would like to thank Anthony's time. The Mr. Scott McCune in the LDS Church for inviting me to the Easter Pageant in Mesa, and I won't do it all because some other of my fellow councilmembers were there, but I got to take my mom, and it was fantastic again, so. The budget retreat was actually very good. Thanks to Larry and staff for making it as painless as it possibly can be for the budget, and we've got some great information. And I'm happy to report that the Youth Commission completed their annual, or semi-annual day of shredding on Saturday, and shredded almost a whole truck of paper and recycled e-electronics and brought in about $2,000 to the generous donations of the community. And we'd like to thank First American Credit Union for their sponsorship of that event, and also the Public Works Department, they had a great crew out there with the E-cycle and helping us with cardboard and bringing extra containers for us, so teamwork makes the dream work, as we say on the Youth Commission, so thank you guys very much.
My mother left the church event to go drop all shreds.
Didn't want to miss it. Hey, Anthony, how about you?
This coming Thursday, the 24th, our house 503, grand opening, 9:30 a.m., 9:30. Plan on being there. And that's it, that's it for me for now.
Well, you got mine, so.
No, no reports from any of them.
I plan to attend the open house at the fire station, very much looking forward to that. The budget retreat was grueling, but we all survived, so.
With headaches, all of us.
Busy week, but I don't know what everybody's complaining about. I thought the budget retreat was great. I enjoyed it. No, it's all good information. I'm kind of nerd that way. Couple of things, went to Terminus Day last Saturday. Not a great turnout, but there were a lot of people that were doing the tours, and I think it's going to be something that really grows. I think timing was a little off this year with Country Thunder and a very, very warm day that day, but I think that's going to turn into a great event. That was good. Also went to the Easter Pageant, also took my mother.
So beautiful, isn't it?
It was, it was a great show. And then Friday night, I went to an event up at the State Capitol called Two Lights for Tomorrow, which was the 250th anniversary of Paul Revere's Ride, followed by Saturday being the shot heard around the world when the British regulars first met the militia in exchange gunfire. So, over the next year or so, a group called America 250 is going to be doing lots of different events throughout the year as we come up into the 250th anniversary of the birth of this great country. So, look for that. There should be quite a few events coming up, but it's America 250, and I'm kind of hoping that the C will get involved in a couple of those things. I know the Republic of Liberty Bell's going to be traveling through the state, but it's a great event, so that was, that was a really cool event to see right until the rain started. And then, looking forward to Thursday morning, 503. That's all I get.
Okay, thank you. Becca.
So I was able to attend Terminus Days as well, and I heard there was a really good turnout for the tours, so that's good.
Tours were a good turnout.
I think it'll be good as we move forward with it. I was able to attend the Easter Pageant as well with my mom. We all brought our moms, it was amazing. It was not planned by me. I don't know if it was planned by you guys or not. And then I dropped off some shredding as well, and I got to see the Youth Commission. It's always great to see those kids, they're amazing. I'm always still very impressed with them. And the budget retreat was long but interesting, and so, you know, it was always good to learn a little bit more about the city and all of the great things that we're doing.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So I went to the Easter Pageant, not with my mom. My husband went with me, but it is such a beautiful event, and you know, it just reminds us of what Easter is all about. And so I hope everyone had a beautiful day celebrating what it is, Easter, but I do want to send my condolences, of course, to the Catholic community for the loss of Pope Francis, obviously, you know, a leader in the Catholic Church and, you know, the first Latin American pope, and so it's just, it's crazy to feel, you know, he was, he was served at, you know, I watched that on TV and his blessing and then the next day, so, but anyways, just a lot of, a lot of people mourning for his passing, so. So let's see, as far as activities, the Leadership Academy, you know, thank you to our PIO team and Scott Barber for everything you do with keeping that going, and, you know, so many people, the graduation was last week, and, you know, so, everyone leaves that program and are just so excited to hear what the city's doing, they're impressed with what we do, with our staff, all the tours, everything, all of the department heads that take the time to educate and work with that group. It's just really a good program, so it was a very, very nice ceremony. There was also Steve Miller, our county supervisor, had a town hall last week, and I appreciated him doing that here at the Recreation Center. He brought county attorney Brad Miller and sheriff people, and Dana Lewis with the Elections Department, and, you know, they, it was really kind of like a Q and A. They just, all of them kind of gave an idea of what they're doing, of some of their focus areas, and just getting input from the community. So it was kind of a light crowd, but it was still, it was nice for him to do that. I'm happy to see, just as it's important for us to continue to be in front of people and getting, getting ideas and feedback. Mesquite School had, and the library, you know, Amber does such a great job also at the library, and the Arts and Culture Commission, there was an art, there's a fifth-grade art exhibit at the library right now, and if you guys have a chance, just pop in there. It's in one of the classrooms, and the artwork from these fifth graders is amazing. And so, you know, Danny, you know, again, Amber, your group does a great job, and it was such a nice event. You know, there was, I believe, forty-five artists, I believe, something in the forties in their parents that were there, and they had refreshments and an exhibit, and it was really, really nice. So if you have a chance, pop in the library to see that. Events, we all are looking forward to the fire station. Chief, we're ready, so hopefully our expectations are going to be met when we come on Thursday. And then also this weekend is the Dia de los Niños event at Paul Mason Sports Complex. It's, you know, children's activities, entertainment, activities, food. Please come out, it's going to be a beautiful day. You know, support our Community Services Department. It was a wonderful event last year, very kid and family-friendly, so please bring your kids out, and it's free. It's a free event, come on out from 11 to 2 o'clock. And the budget, just thank you to all the staff, Brenda, thank you, you know, to your staff. This is what, just your second year? Last year, you were brand-new doing this, but, you know, just thank you for just the organization and the presentation, and for Larry and all of the staff members. We all know the difficult times that you all go through, and, you know, we're trying to, you know, increase, you know, levels of service all while maintaining, you know, low property taxes and everything, you know, with, with the growth that's going on. So a lot of challenges ahead, but, you know, I think we're all feeling pretty good about where we're going, so, so thank you to everyone with that. And then finally, I did receive a notice, there is an opening on the Arts and Culture Commission, so if anyone is interested, those meetings are the first Tuesday of every month at 4 o'clock, so if you're interested, go on to the city clerk's website and apply by May 2nd, if anyone is interested in that. And then, what is this, the community meeting for the, what is this one for the hazardous waste storage permit application? Community meeting on Tuesday, April 29th, at the Casa Grande City Hall chambers, here from 6 to 7:30 p.m. So, questions on hazardous waste permitting, learn battery recycling issues, other issues of concern, so please feel free to come by. With that, anything else? We'll go ahead and close the meeting. We adjourn. Thank you. Everyone, good night.